Hello. Welcome to this recording of a meeting of South Tyneside's Borough Council. I'd like to talk you through some of the procedures you'll see during the meeting. Council is chaired by the Mayor of South Tyneside, councillor Richard Porthouse. First, members will be given the opportunity to declare any pecuniary interests they have in items of business on the agenda. Next, council will consider the draft minutes of its last meeting. The mayor will then make any announcements he wishes to put to all members. The council will then consider a number of reports as outlined on the agenda which is published five working days before the meeting. Each report will be introduced and moved by the cabinet member with responsibility for that particular area of business. It will then be seconded by another member, after which it will be open for discussion to all councillors. Once all the reports have been covered, the council will consider any written questions or motions that have been submitted. The mayor will then close the meeting. Thank you for taking the time to view this recording. If you'd like any further information about future council meetings or about any other aspect of council business, please visit our website, southtyneside.gov.uk. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for his worshiped mayor, councillor Richard Porthouse.
Good evening, colleagues.
Good evening, colleagues.
I am the new councillor. I am delighted to inform you that this meeting is being moved forward. Any member who would prefer to withdraw from this meeting, if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Stratford-upon-Debussy Services. Who would be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak from the floor or any of the adjutants should use the main floors available. I am delighted to welcome to you most members of your parliament who attend this forum, local democracy, well done. The first thing we present is declarations of interest. One declaration is being received. Council friend declaring a peculiarly interest in motion to as a new cap branch secretary. Does anyone now wish to be able to make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next thing we have to do is the minutes of the meeting at the coast of the 3rd September 2015. All the acceptors are true record.
Aye.
And now welcome to the meeting is Aske Bashman, the new chief constable of the Northumbria Police Force. I am pleased to say that the Northumbria Police and Crime Commissioner, Mr Swales, has come to meet the chief constable this evening. I am delighted to welcome him aboard to the meeting. I will give the chief constable the opportunity to address members and he will then take any questions that members wish to raise. Chief Constable? Does that work? Are you all right?
Mr Mayor, thank you very much. A real honour for me to be here this evening to speak to you, so thank you very much for the invitation, a very kind invitation. I should perhaps start by saying it's a few years ago that I was actually born not very far from me, I was born in Dinsfield Hospital, the same hospital that the chief executive of the council. Mr Swales was born in, well, here's the one, it's a very different year. Several years before me. I do emphasise that point to him. It's some form of revenge for the fact that his father taught me English in the days when the cane was allowed. Saint Wilfrid at South Shields many years ago. You as well.
I taught you.
You taught me as well. I'm in trouble. Perhaps I should quit while I'm ahead. But there we are, it is genuinely a real privilege for me, a real privilege to stand here before you as the new chief constable of Northumbria Police Force that I'm very, very proud to be the chief constable of, and that's a word which I'll use over the next few minutes, I'm going to talk for too long because I know I've got some questions for all, I'm going to talk about pride, pride in being a public servant and pride in being a police officer. I've been a police officer for 28 years in three different forces, in the Metropolitan Police, in Cleverley Police, and then the last six years in Northumbria Police. But I have to say, and I'm bound to say this, but I genuinely mean it, I'm particularly proud to be the chief constable of my own force, a force that my father served in, and it is my wish to serve you for as long as I possibly can and to do the best possible service that I can to you, the communities of Northumbria, in this case, the very fine community of South Tyneside, and the local authority that I live in and that my children go to school in. So it means an awful lot to me to be chief constable of Northumbria, and in particular, it means a huge amount to me to be here tonight to address you all. These are very, very difficult times to be a public servant, I don't think you need me to tell you that, and they're only going to get harder, hence the reason for my emphasis upon pride, because the next two, three, four years are going to be very, very difficult indeed, and I can't ever say that enough. It's going to be very difficult for us to get through the next two, three, four years and still keep a sense of morale amongst the police officers and the police staff. My job is to make sure that they are as motivated now as they ever were, that they are as proud now to serve you as they were the day that they joined this magnificent organisation that I have the privilege to lead. So it's going to be difficult, there are going to have to be changes, some very significant changes over the next few years, quite what those changes are, I do not know, a lot will depend upon the spending review which is announced next month, and in addition to that, the review of the police funding formula which takes place pretty much at the same time, neither of which unnecessarily going to bring us very good news, a lot of it is quite bad in terms of the cuts to funding, and there's no two ways of backing it, there will be fewer police officers in Northumbria Police in five years' time than there are now, and there are fewer police officers now and police staff and community support officers now than there were five years ago from here, so it is going to get hard, it's been tough so far, it's always going to get tougher. I think what I need to say to you is despite that, there is a real determination within Northumbria Police to do the very best that we can for the communities that we serve. We're going to have to change what we do, and we're going to have to change the way that we do it, but I'm quite happy to say this in front of my boss, the Police and Crime Commissioner, Vera Bede, the same thing that I said to her in the interview when I asked for the job, and that is that I have not sought to be chief constable of Northumbria so that I can dismantle neighbourhood policing. I will not do that, it will look different, I hope it still delivers, and I firmly believe it will still deliver the same service that it always has, but it will look and feel slightly different, that is a necessity, but it's my intention to make that as good as it can possibly be, and still provide the essential connection between Northumbria Police and the communities that we serve. If we lose that connection, then we lose the confidence in the general public, and if we lose the confidence in the general public, then we will stop policing by consent. That cannot be allowed to happen. So it's my desire, my intention, my will over the next few years to make sure that despite the cuts that we face, we still maintain a very clear connection with you, our communities, with our partners, and we continue to deliver, I hope, the very high standards of service that you have enjoyed in recent years. Thank you very much. I'll take your time.
Any other questions for you? House Ellison?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, can I just congratulate the chief constable of the town, and can I just ask, can you provide residents of South Tyneside with some reassurance that we can decrease some resources, frontline and neighbourhood police numbers will be protected?
Well, I can give you reassurance that there will be an effective neighbourhood policing services as we move forward. As for the numbers, I think much depends on what comes out of the spending review, and I'll be absolutely honest with you, it is going to be very challenging. I think we will move towards a service which is based upon need, and we'll have to look very carefully where that service is needed, and that might involve some difficult decisions. But the priority has to be to provide that connection with neighbourhoods that we are here to serve, so I can give you reassurance that we will continue to provide a very effective professional neighbourhood policing service.
Constable Dick?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I would like to ask the chief constable, we have extremely effective community safety partnership working at all levels in South Tyneside. In your opinion, what more support could the council give to the partnership and the police when it is in crime and disorder up in the borough?
Well, I think we've, many of you will know, we changed our structure some time ago and moved to three area commands as opposed to six, we used to have six policing districts that were aligned with the boundaries of the six local authorities that we serve. We moved out of necessity to three, and for South Tyneside, that meant that you were partnered with, you are partnered with Sunderland in terms of policing service. I should point out that headquarters is actually Millbank in South Shields, so the headquarters of policing, both South Tyneside and Sunderland is placed in South Shields. In terms of what the local authority, the community safety partnership can do to help us even more, I will be selfish in saying, anything we can do to better align along the boundaries that we have aligned ourselves to would be of huge assistance, and I'm thinking particularly of Sunderland, I think there is some synergy, there is quite a bit in common between South Tyneside and Sunderland in terms of service delivery, we recognise that, and it would be good if we could exploit that a little bit further. I think the other thing I should point out is that local authorities are facing a lot of cuts, and I recognise that, every public service is in difficult times, particularly the police and local authorities, probably more so than a lot of other public services. And I suppose it's a bit of a plea, and it's a selfish plea, but I think it rubs both ways. If we're looking at cuts, if a local authority is looking at cuts in services and doing services in a different way, I would ask that the local authority looks at what the implications are for policing, because we are a strong get-together and we are apart, and there are many decisions that can be taken potentially in isolation without speaking to other agencies, and where is guilty of that is the next agency, so I've got to make sure that we do that at the same time. It would be wrong for me to cut services, policing services, without considering what the impact is for local authorities, and similarly, I think it would be wrong, if I can say this, for a local authority to consider cuts in services without considering the impact on policing, that will be my urge in terms of a better delivery. I mean, the most effective partnership I have is with my commissioner, Police and Crime Commissioner, as long as I can maintain that relationship moving forward, the best thing I can do is keep that at the level it's at, and that will allow me to provide a better service to the six local authorities that I work with.
House Ellison?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I have my congratulations to you, Constable Bashman? You've already touched a little bit on my question when you answered councillor Dick's question. Are you pleased with the outcome of the transition from six area commands to three, and in particular, how that has affected South Tyneside and Sunderland as the subject matter?
I am happy with it, it's not been easy, and as I say, a lot of the decisions that we've forced to take in these years are born out of necessity rather than choice. That said, I think it's about as far as we can go, I do struggle, and we did look at whether or not we could go to two area commands and use the Tyne as a boundary and police north of the Tyne and south of the Tyne, and we thought that was too far, that was too much, we would be shrinking too much, it would be too much to take on in two lumps. I think three is about as far down as we can go, I do think it's working, it's stretching particularly some of the partnership arrangements a lot, it really is, and I think the way that we deliver our business in five years' time will look very different to how it does now. It's very difficult for me to over emphasise the importance of partnership, an awful lot of the assistance, the practical assistance we get in tackling crime and the causes of crime and disorder, because disorder and antisocial behaviour are actually a bigger part of what we do than actually crime is. An awful lot of that relies upon a good working relationship with a local authority. Now, I, having taken up post, I've spent a lot of time getting around each of the chief executives to speak to them, and I was here in this magnificent building just a couple of weeks ago talking to Martin Swales about this very issue. It's really important that Martin is happy with the relationship he's got, and at the moment he is, and it's important I have a very good link with him and indeed with all the elected members, and what I would urge people to do, if there's something you see that you're not happy with in terms of that working relationship, and you think it's starting to slip, please, please let me know, because that's something that I will act upon. But at the moment, I've got to be happy with where we are, I think it is working, it's not ideal, it's as good as we could have made it, and I think it will get better in terms of that partnership relationship as it starts to develop.
House O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for taking the time this evening to come and speak to us.
My pleasure.
My question is, what are your views regarding the possibility of the blue light services all being amalgamated, being the police, the fire, and the ambulance service, and with one commissioner or possible elected may having autonomy over the whole lot?
Thank you for that. I guess you wanted sport. Well, okay, and in more seriousness, I do think you've got the best person here to answer it, and it's not me, because you've got, I'm joined by my commissioner, Vera Bede, who's probably far better placed to answer that question. We already do a lot of work with the fire service, and I hope if I can invite you to answer it with me, but we do a lot of work with the fire service operation, they're a great partner, and we work very closely with them, and they're one of our closest partners operationally day to day. This is completely new ground, it's completely new ground, it's exciting, we're very positive about it, Tom Cape, the chief fire officer, and I, if I can meet him tomorrow afternoon to go through some issues around this. We will approach this in the most positive professional way that we can, but as to how it looks and what the future will hold, if I'm in there, I think that's answered by the commissioner.
Can I have a perspective again?
I'd be happy to. Could I just say before I do how proud I am of the opportunity to Steve Bashman to be the chief constable, it was a fine decision and I'm very glad I made it. My own view as commissioner, many of you know that the position is that the government has put out a consultation document suggesting that the fire service, particular fire and rescue, should come under the governance of the Police and Crime Commissioner, or something of an amalgamation of governance should be made available. The proposal so far for the ambulance trust is that, it only goes as far as perhaps I should go on the board of the ambulance trust and work with them, which I'd be pleased to do, because obviously the police and the ambulance service work very closely together, and that would just enhance that. So far as bringing fire and rescue under the Police and Crime Commissioner, I would be really quite vehemently against doing that. I think that it would lose a great deal of expertise that currently lies in the fire authority, and I don't see the point of it, quite honestly. What I think we should be doing is using this as a nudge toward much closer working with the fire service and with the ambulance service, and as Mr Bashman has said, we already work closely together, we've got, for instance, people co-located in Bellinger out in Northumberland, we've got, we used to have a police station and a fire station, we now have a police and fire station, they couldn't have kept that open if we hadn't paid them some rent, and we've now closed ours, and there is a move similar to Sunderland, and it seems to me that's what needs to be done, practical joint working. So I think that the lowest level of change that's looked at in this consultation is that, again, I as police commissioner should go on to the fire authority as a member of the council, or you'll possibly be an observer who's occasionally allowed to speak. Now, again, I would well do that, because it would help us to sculpt future joint working, but I see absolutely no reason, quite frankly, to switch the governance about now. So that's kind of part one as a commissioner. So far as the further devolution proposal is, whether this should come under a mayor, I mean, my own view about mayors, and I put it very shortly, is that unless we're absolutely forced to have one, we shouldn't have one at all, and that the repository of power should be the combined authority made up of the leaders of the local authorities and not a directly elected man.
Here we are.
Thank you for that opportunity.
I think you've got one more question for you, Chief Constable. House O'Sullivan?
Thank you very much, Constable. My question is, we have a capitol every six weeks, and usually we have a representative from your force to term. This Monday was actually expect away, and what expect away was saying is about the play telling ahead of us, that there'd be no reported burglaries within the last six weeks, and there'd be no serious assault within the last six weeks. And what we were saying was, that heaven is a very safe town to live in, and a very safe town to walk around in. We also have another number of organisations that used to come to the caps and give the reports, who no longer give turn on or give a written report. Our only hope that you will continue, Sir O'Neill, your representatives to...
Well, I can give you an absolute guarantee that you will, and I would just add the point that I made earlier, that neighbourhood policing is the bedrock upon which everything we do is built, and the notion that we would not come to meetings and listen to residents about what concerns them most and deliver service to you that we think is best for you without asking you what your opinion is, is totally alien to me, and I could not, I could not stand here as a chief constable and say that's what we're going to do, I will not do it, so you know, I have my personal guarantee in front of this audience that we will attend those meetings.
How are you, Chief Constable? House Dickinson?
I'd like to ask Constable Dixon to move aboard and fasten your seat. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. On behalf of my mayor and of South Tyneside councillors, I would like to thank Steve for coming along this evening and showing his vision, and hopefully take away one or two thoughts from our members this evening. In light of ever decreasing budgets and us having to produce more and more efficiencies, now more than ever, it's essential that we work at ways, that we look at ways in working together to make these efficiencies and work smarter in partnership. We look forward to our continued work with our Police and Crime Commissioner Vera Bede and just how we're taking forward our priorities. Together, we need to work in a range of key areas, including implementing changes to the antisocial behaviour tools and powers in response to the antisocial behaviour, crime and policing bill, exploring opportunities for further co-location of services within our neighbourhood policing teams, closely monitoring crime trends in light of the austerity and welfare reform measures being implemented by central government, working together to implement the commissar's priorities and in particular, the licence against women and girls strategy, continuing to reduce re-offending, and finally, protecting our most vulnerable residents. On behalf of the mayor and our members at South Tyneside Council this evening, we would like to thank our Police and Crime Commissioner Vera and Steve for your attendance this evening and for answering our questions. Thank you once again.
The next business is mayor's communications. There are no mayor's communications to report on this occasion. The next business is the council to report the direct services on the Heaven Centre, the first three months. Our last, Constable Currie, to follow me, move aboard. Constable Currie?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Heaven Centre, what some people said would be the white elephant, it was a wrong place to not say other things. Heaven Centre, it's a premier leisure facility located in the heart of the Heaven Centre. It was opened by Mr Mayor and the Poland Gold Members' Place for Crewe, MBE, on the 15th of June this year. Since opening, this facility has surpassed all expectations, attracting 1,133 new direct debit members, with a further 291 monthly activity per pass's purchase. 732 young people that are under the age of 18 have also been issued with three discount cards, enabling reduced charges for paying player activities such as gyms and swimming. In addition to the leisure facilities, Heaven Centre also contains a library with just 612 new members, a 46% increase in book admissions, and 6,840 users logging on a public computer. The summer holiday arena challenge, which was a six-week programme where encouraged children aged four or eleven to read, it was 393 children to part, and that's an increase of 40% in the previous year. School uses at the centre have been on the increase, 200 are new schools having managed twice term users for each class to the library, the numbers have fallen. Making to the change for life agenda, local residents now have access to free health checks, nutritional advice, physical activity classes, and support stop smoking. And today, there's been 40 clients using these exercises, and there's been 295 exercise sessions have been attended. A series of free activities sessions for those who are early at the centre by the sports development team through the summer holidays, and that attracted 269 users aged 25 and 14. So in conclusion, dear colleagues, Heaven Centre has been a fantastic addition to the council's leisure portfolio. The facilities have been heard and seen by a lot of community, and are doing, will be very popular with both families and individuals of every age. So I'm delighted to be here doing this, being a heaven person myself, and certainly knocked down, well, I'm not saying things, well, I think, for those people who said that it wasn't fit for use and that we're not, and it was rusty and bloody wet, they have been proved entirely wrong, and I'm very proud of this, and so is all my colleagues, and I don't mean just the ones in heaven or general, I mean all my council colleagues. So thank you for that, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled? Are there any questions? Representative O'Malley, Mr Currie to report. Constable McCabe?
Good evening, colleagues, good evening, I'm the public. I'm ahead in line as well, and standing here, and I'm not going to give a long speech, I want to hear compliments of some people. Heaven Centre was a long time in making, involved a lot of hard work from the councillors in heaven and councillors from South Tyneside. Without going through all the anti-seem industry, we had a deal on with Asha, and had a deal on with Tesco first. Both took considerable numbers of years before they felt through, and I think, and I'm not one of the people in the audience who are from heaven, I think people were losing faith with the politicians in heaven, because we kept reiterating the same words, be patient, be patient, be patient. So I found the people of the heaven area and the South Tyneside congregation for their patience, and eventually we have a fine astonishment, which is well used, as Deputy Lieutenant said. The failures of Tesco and Asha were due to the fact that they have little empires and they look after, or they want to look after, which is their colony. There's one person who's not here tonight, who was not just the catalyst, he was the driver and the mainstay of this being a fact, and that's Constable Ian Mal, who's presently again advancing the cause of South Tyneside tonight, that's why he's not here. And in that, in his absence, I'm sure that he doesn't like it being complimented in public, but in his absence, and his company are recording...
I think we've got one more question for you. Please, Councilor, can I ask a question?
Thank you very much, Councilor. My question is, we have a Catholic every six weeks and usually we have a representative from your force to turn up. This Monday was actually expect away. And what expect away was saying is about the play telling ahead of us that there'd be no reported burglaries within the last week's peace and there'd be no serious assault within the last week's peace. And what we were saying was that heaven is a very safe town to live, a very safe town to walk around in. We also have another number of organisations that used to come to the cops and give the reports, who no longer give turn on or give a written report. Our only hope that you will continue, Senator, and your representatives to...
Well, I can give you an absolute guarantee that you will. And I would just add the point that I made earlier, that neighbourhood policing is the bedrock upon which everything we do is built. The notion that we would not come to meetings and listen to residents about what concerned them most and deliver service to you, that we think is best for you without asking you what your opinion is, is totally alien to me. And I could not stand here as a chief council and say that's what we're going to do. I will not do it. So you know, I have my personal guarantee in front of this audience that we will attend those meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Last councilperson to move a vote of赞成 or opposed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of my mayor and our South Tyneside councillors, I would like to thank Steve for coming along this evening and showing his vision and hopefully take away one or two thoughts from our members this evening. In light of ever decreasing budgets and us having to produce more and more efficiencies, now more than ever, it's essential that we work with, that we look at ways in working together to make these efficiencies and work smarter in partnership. We look forward to our continued work with our Police and Crime Commissioner Vera Bait and just how we're taking forward our priorities. Together, we need to work in a range of key areas, including implementing changes to the antisocial behaviour tools and powers in response to the antisocial behaviour crime and policing bill. Exploring opportunities for further co-location of services within our neighbourhood policing teams. Closely monitoring crime trends in light of the austerity and welfare reform measures being implemented by central government. Working together to implement the commiser's priorities and in particular the licence against women and girls strategy. Continuing to reduce re-offending and finally protecting our most vulnerable residents. On behalf of the mayor and our members at South Tyneside Council this evening, we would like to thank our Police and Crime Commissioner Vera and Steve for your attendance this evening and for answering our questions. Thank you once again.
The next business is mess communications. There are no mess communications to report on this occasion. The next business is to consider a report of the Director of Public Services on the Heaven Centre, the first three months. Our last councilor to forward your report. Councilor?
Heaven Centre, what some people said would be the white elephant, but it was a wrong way, so not to bother things. Heaven Centre, it's a premier leisure facility located in the heart of Heaven Centre. It was opened by Mr. Mayor and the Poland Gold Members' Trust for free MBE on the fifteenth of June this year. Since opening, this facility has surpassed all expectations, attracting 1,133 new direct debit members with a further 291 monthly activity per year access purchase. 732 young people that are under the age of 21 have also been issued with three discount cards and able to reduce annual charges for paying player activities such as gyms and swimming. In addition to the leisure facilities, Heaven Centre also contains a library with just 612 new members, a 46% increase in book admissions and 6,840 users logging on public computers. The summer holiday arena challenge, which was a six-week programme where encouraged children aged four or eleven to read, it was 393 children to part and that's an increase of 40% in the previous year. School users at the centre have its own increase. Two hundred and a new schools have increased twice term users for each class of the library and always have followed them. Meaning to the change for life agenda, global residents now have access to free health checks, nutritional advice, physical activity classes and support stop smoking. And today, there's been 40 clients using these exercises and there's been 295 exercise sessions have been attended. A series of free activities sessions for those who live at the centre by the sports development team through the summer holidays have not attracted 269 users aged between five and fourteen. So in conclusion, dear colleagues, Heaven Centre has been a fantastic addition to the council's leisure portfolio. The facilities have been heard and seen by a lot of community and are doing, will be very popular with both families and individuals of every age. So I'm delighted to be here doing this, being a heaven person myself and certainly knocked down in, well, I'm not saying for these twelve things, for those people who said that it wasn't fit for use and that we're not, and it was rusty and bloody weird. They have been proved entirely wrong and I'm very proud of this and so is all my colleagues. And I don't mean just the ones in heaven or general, I mean all my council colleagues. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Is that settled? Are there any questions? Representative Mr. Mayor to report. Councilor McGee?
Good evening, colleagues, good evening, members of the public. I'm a head of mine as well and standing here and I'm not going to give a long speech. I want to hear compliments to some people. Heaven Centre was a long time ago. Involved a lot of hard work from the councillors in heaven and councillors from South Tyneside. Without going through all the anti-seed industry, we had a deal on with Asda and had a deal on with Tesco first. Both took considerable numbers of years before they felt through. And I think, and I'm one of the two people in the audience who are from heaven, I think people were losing faith with the politicians in heaven because we kept reiterating the same words, be patient, be patient, be patient. So I found the people of the heaven area and the South Tyneside population for their patience and eventually we have a fine astonishment, which is well used as the deputy minister said. The failures of Tesco and Asda were due to the fact that they have little empires and they look after, or they want to look after, which is their colony. There's one person who's not here tonight, who was not just the catalyst, he was the driver and the mainstay of this thing of fact, and that's Councilor Ian Martin, who's presently again advancing the cause of self-tensing tonight, that's why he's not here. And in that, in his absence, I'm sure that he doesn't like it being complimented in public, but in his absence and his probably recorded minutes, a one-way store, not just might cut through the thumbs, they cut through the thumbs of all the heaven councillors because without Ian Martin, this project would not have gone ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. Does any of our members speak? Has the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report with the Corporate Direct Economic Regeneration of the South Tyneside Employment Skills Board, the exchange. Our last councilor to forward your report. Councilor?
This report, Chair, provides council with an update on the work of the Employment and Skills Board that is delivering one of the most crucial elements of our ambitious economic regeneration agenda. That of ensuring that our young people leaving education have the skills and attributes that are needed by local businesses. This is a shared agenda with our employers, our schools, both primary and secondary, our young people and their parents and guardians. We are far more able to increase economic wellbeing for those who live, learn and work in the borough if we are able to understand and meet the current and future needs of employers in terms of the skills, knowledge and understanding they need their workforce to have in order to start, survive and thrive as businesses. chaired by an independent chair, that's Alan Clark, CBE, the board has supported a number of our key employers such as the Port of Time, Siemens, South Tyneside NHS, BT and Keaton. As the report highlights, the key aim of this activity is predicated on a whole system approach in relation to employment and skills. With a different relationship with employers at its heart, strategically important employment and skills areas have been identified along with employers. Activities have been designed to ensure that the education and skills programmes on offer from our learning providers are aligned with the continuing and emerging employment demands. We must continue to support the momentum that this business and schools partnership activity is delivering in order to capitalise on the 5,200 employment opportunities for our residents that the hugely exciting international advanced manufacturing park is going to create and the other significant opportunities that the regeneration of the River of Time will create in the marine and offshore energy sectors and the development of new industries utilising digital technologies that will provide a real foothold in the push to create new sustainable sector jobs. I ask council to note the progress.
Councilor? Are there any questions on, or does any, oops, sorry, is that settled?
No.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions on that procedure room here. No questions have been received on this rule. The next business is to receive motions on that procedure room ten. Two motions have been received on this rule. The first motion was submitted by Councilor Kirk, Ian Martin, Alan Smith, Perry, Gibson, David and Corrigan. Our last councilor to move the motion and we have to speak for the five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is settled. The senator may speak for the three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be voted over by members who will speak for the three minutes and may move amendments. Councilor Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you read recently in the press, you had the ninth place for culture. According to these people, it was the ninth worst place for culture and such things. This Pity Flow Report, understandably, there's a lot of anger among other residents, regional cultural organisations who can't understand and how can you obviously justify their claims? Well, here's a few facts. We have one of the richest histories of any borough with lots of cultural activities. Start off with museums, albeit. It was a storied place, supply depot for the Roman army. It's the best one still left in the entire world and I've had that for archaeologists. And there's lots of things being done here, found here. The UN museum is a very good one that was introduced in the nineteenth century by various local people. And we have Bee's World. Bee's World is, well, obviously a bit, but the main thing is with Bee's World is that in there, last year, we had the Codex Amian Times, that's how I wrote it that way. It's the first written bible ever. There was three done, this one's a replica, but they were done in Jero. Also, the first written English history was done there. So there's the museums. Other things we've got is music, we've got everything from the early bands to full orchestras, choirs, pop rock societies, you name it, we've got it. And of course, every year we have our carnival that goes through the summer festival and we have all sorts of music being played on the front and in the parks. You've got brass bands, you've got guitars, you name it, any type of music you want, it's going to be there. We've had some great men and women. We've had a great Catherine Coates, I mentioned, on the other side. We've got thunder records and others, military heroes, we've got three or four ACs. And then we can go on and on about this, but you know, to have the over, have overlooked and unparalleled heritage, heritage culture in areas of outstanding natural beauty, and that's where I come to the beaches and the cliffs, which have got all sorts of roads. The Times said Marsden was the eighth best and could be. And we've got these other people who were, they reckon were the ninth worst, I don't know what to think about them. And really, what I want, Mr. Chairman, to happen here, and I know we all do, we want these people from the Royal Society of Arts, because all amongst all, I don't know this heritage, culture and outstanding natural beauty shows that my report is misguided, it's logical, frankly, it's all rubbish. They're seen, they're claimed on a number of blue plaques. But you know, we have a lot of famous people in here, but unfortunately the houses are no longer there, so if we want to put a blue plaque there, it could be quite difficult, but we're doing our best. Anyway, what we resolved to do, we write to the RSE indictment to visit South Tyneside and see what themselves call superb cultural heritage. In strong council action, we want to ensure that homes and workplaces are prominent figures from our borough's history and mark with blue plaques that more people can appreciate the rich heritage of South Tyneside. We cross the ground places here, debate in the House of Commons to raise the world concerns us to be scary and request the status. Secretary of State of the Department of Culture visits the borough to demonstrate the government's commitment to supporting our accomplished heritage. And I've left a couple of little things out and I thought I'd say at the end, if anybody needs a light thrown on, we had the first electric light, that's my point. So this is what I want, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure my second hour will follow it and I hope that people will join in with us.
Thank you, Councilor Kirk. Is the motion settled? Is the motion then to be debated by members? So any members who wish to ask a question to speak or move an amendment? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Short again, Mr. Mayor, but it needs to be reinforced. Today, along with other colleagues, I was at the Stadium of Light, the North East speaking on a forum, very important meeting, where we found out some facts and figures. One of the perceptions that people have of the North East is that it's a bad world and in fact it's not. Nissan produces X amount of cars. The North East is the only area in the whole of the UK that has a surplus trade. Something like eight percent, we were told the day, where the rest of the country is four percent. So this perception from this, I call them a thick tank, they call themselves a think tank. They didn't think very well when they delivered this report because you have, Councilor Kirk mentioned, several people of whom are quite maybe famous from South Tyneside Borough. I just think they've developed that a little bit, particularly about two or three people and how they can come up with the fact that we're culturally deficient is beyond me. Indeed, we have a world renowned scholar, born in Monten, so you could have been one of your supporters, Councilor Kirk, born in Monten, in six seventy-three A D, responsible for mathematical solutions, for the tides, for the very way that we described it, two thousand and fifteen, Anno Donini, he was the man who instigated that with his writings. We are called England, we're not called Jugland, that's on the other side of the water, we're not called Saxonland, we're called Angolan because the people who in the heritage of Northumbria, Germany and Tunisia were Angles and it was because of Bee's publishing, his writings, the book that he referred to, the Storia Actu式的， the gentleman, the history of the English speaking people, he was the person who was the first disciple who spread the gospel about South Tyneside in a small way. So we're very, very, you know, a world famous scholar, visited by people from all over the world, you know, and we're culturally deficient in this thick tank, sorry, think tank. Something else that's close to my heart and what happened, do actually have a blue plaque on his house. Don't read Wikipedia because Wikipedia is not always right, but he was born in eighteen ninety in Glen Street in heaven and his name is Arthur Holmes. Most people in here, some of the young people might know of him if they're street geology. He's probably the world's most famous geologist. In the nineteen twenty's through the twenties, he developed the science of the age of the earth and he had a theory about mantle convection, the thermal convection of the earth, the crust. And he developed this theory, which is commonly called plate tectonics. And it wasn't until men went into outer space and looked down and different experiments were carried out, the guy was right. So this poor man from heaven, again, one of South Tyneside's residents, world famous geologist, poorly ignored by the thick tank. Now, what could go on and could talk about our music heritage, you know, at the present rate, we have Little Mix and Joe McElroy and other things that the young people might know. We also have people far back, this my generation, people like John Miles, you know, who is a musical director for Turner, Tina Turner at the moment, you know, will have people of their stature representing South Tyneside's culture, while people like Peter Franny, does anybody know Peter Franny? RSC director, Roy Shakespeare Company director, educated at St Joseph's in Salford, England. And for, you know, and I could go on and infinite, as you mentioned, you know, I don't want to talk about Brendan Foster and Steve Cram from Athletics or, you know, we could be here all night, Mr. Mayor, to be quite honest with you. And I did say I would keep the chalk, not dare the chalk, but I did say I would keep the chalk. But I find it actually very, very disgusting that people, especially when you go to forums and you have been here to represent your borough and your council, find it very, very difficult to let that conception go. That deception, the acquired, Councilor Kirk, has to be tackled and we have to have them in a state here to show them that we are culturally deficient. Thank you.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
We will now deal with the second motion. The second motion was submitted by Councilor Ed Martin, Bob Walsh, Kirk, Perry, Dave, Trina and Pung. Our last councilor to move the motion, as with previous motion, may speak for the five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is settled. The senator may speak for the three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be voted over by members who, as with the previous motion, may each speak for the three minutes and may move amendments. Councilor?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, for many evil times, the law has intervened in the relationship between the worker and employer. And of course, legislation has been necessary to redress the imbalance of power between employers and workers. The reforms, and I use that word advisedly, that are in the trade union bill are the most sweeping and radical unit reforms since the nineteen eighties. It will make industrial action ineffective, if not impossible, and really is unnecessary as the level of strikes is almost as rose ever. Units will be required to set out detailed plans on how they will use social media, websites and blogs to coordinate strike action. The bill may introduce a new criminal offence of intimidation on the picket line. Units will also be required to appoint supervisor of pickets and provide the police with details of their plans for picketing or demonstrations away from the picket line. I would remind council that at present, the UK has the most repressive trade union legislation in any western democracy. To put it bluntly, the twenty fifteen trade union bill is a grossly unfair package of megs that will tip the balance of power in the workplace even further to the employer. And the bill marks a further attempt by a Tory government to make any trade union activity ineffective, if not impossible. The true reasoning behind the bill became apparent when David Cameron unintentionally admitted that the trade union bill amounted to anti-strike laws. So good proconium or the methods in the bill, it has led the Conservative MP David Davis to attack parts of the bill regarding pickets and picketing, stating that the proposed restrictions on pickets were like something of a Franco dictatorship in Spain. Of course, for Tory, now he is, he believes in the rest of the bill. And this proposed legislation comes from the party that proclaims that it is the workers' champion. Trade unions give workers a voice in the workplace that otherwise we deny them. Unions also give some way to redressing the balance of power in the workplace. The proposals in the bill will make it much harder for units to do their day-to-day job of dealing with problems in the workplace before they escalate into disputes. The trade union movement is the largest group in society that stands up to exploitation and over the last fifty years, the unions have been at the forefront in ensuring that the workplace is safe for workers to be in. So this, let's take a look at some of the other proposals. The thresholds for industrial action have made the headline. But even when ballots meet the new rules, the bill will allow employers to break strikes by bringing in agency workers, staff workers. It is a recipe for disaster, disorder and chaos. At the same time, the government has rejected any suggestions from the union movement to modernise the way in which voting takes place, for example, by voting online, through secure websites or properly monitored workplace ballots. The proposal also restricts police union members' rights to picket business. The proposal also restricts and police union members' rights to picket peacefully. This at a time when the chief constable of the Lancashire Police Force has said that his force will not be viable after twenty twenty due to cuts in funding. We've just heard the chief constable for Northumbria, uh, outline his worries regarding, uh, cuts in funding. And Vera Bay issued a press release which stated, "I won't go with the police officers out on the streets of Northumbria doing what they do best, protecting and supporting our communities, not arresting someone because unions haven't given two weeks' notice if they intend to use a loudspeaker or carry a banner during a strike." The attack on the political funds takes us back to nineteen twenty seven, when in the aftermath of the general strike, similar legislation was enacted which requires union members to opt in to the political fund rather knocked out. This was appealed by post-war Labour government in nineteen forty seven. This action will reduce the ability of trade unions to campaign on issues that affect their members or to support political parties, namely the main opposition party in Britain, the Labour Party. And these restrictions will only apply to trade unions. Any private company that wants to fund political campaigns will be free to do so without battling from government. The money donated by trade unions to the Labour Party is clean money. We know where it comes from. The same cannot be said of the monies donated to the Conservative Party. Members in this chamber know full well that the whole point of trade unionism is that it isn't about individual decisions, it's about working people coming together to improve their life. This implies taking collective and democratic decisions. In a free and democratic country, trade unions should be able to make these decisions without being shackled by the necessary attacks on workers' rights and civil liberties, which are grossly undemocratic. We should oppose these oppressive proposals. As one commentator noted, the government is embarking a jihad against the trade unions for which they can expect little support. The Tories do not understand collectivism, or maybe they do, because they seek to destroy it, as in believing the philosophy of individualism and selfishness. To quote Francis O'Grady, General Secretary of the Trade Union, saying, "This country has a proud tradition of liberty and democracy, and trade unions are central to that." I move the notice of motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Is the motion seconded? The motion is now opened and debated. Consul, yes, Consul Malcolm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, members of the public, um, I would like to say it's a pleasure to set this motion, but it's not because of the very serious nature of this motion. This is an insidious piece of legislation that's been trying to pass by this Tory government. This right wing Tory government has essentially taken a look back to the ideological conflicts of the nineteen seventies. This is what it's all about. It's about reducing the strength of trade unions. It's about reducing the strength of workers to defend their rights. Since the nineteen seventies, there's been more job insecurity, more job losses across the whole of the UK as a consequence of union strengthening cutback. There's no need for trade unions' rights to be cut back in this bill, which is being proposed. Consul Malcolm's already mentioned about David Davies and his comments about that, but we also have the Liberal Democrat, Fitz Cable, making his comments about the legislation being vindictive, ideological, provocative, to say the least. We have human rights groups who are saying this is a major attack on civil liberties across the UK. We also have business groups who have their concerns about the unintended consequences attached to this legislation. So it isn't just about trade unions trying to protect their rights or workers trying to protect their rights. This goes across the board, across the political spectrum. So there's no doubt that this right wing Tory government are out here to attack workers and their trade unions. I have no doubt that we must stand up and fight against this bill, the nation doesn't get the legislation. The unions are fighting tooth and nail, the nation doesn't get through. And if you don't already know, on the third of November, there is a TUC rally outside Park at twelve thirty. If you're free to be there, go down there and make your voice heard. But as a council, we are making our voice heard through this motion, and Mr. Mayor, I connect this motion to the, to members.
The motion is now opened and debated by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak, or move an amendment? Consul Perry.
Whenever legislation is passed, whenever legislation is passed, there's always the question, will it be adhered to or will it be ignored? And people were quite surprised after the miners' strike in eighty forty five. After being out for a year, we were told on the day of return by the public manager, in as many words, "You will not raise your ugly heads again." And I think they've learned a lesson, that good outside and gates doesn't get you anywhere. Within a fortnight, um, try to remember this very clearly, there were still my members who were sacked for taking a small amount of coal home. Oh, you can say that was slavery, whatever, but at the time, they were owed the delivery of concession fuel by the coal board, it was currently being delivered. So the first breach of any, um, arrangement was done by the coal boy. Um, when these two lads were sacked, let's talk about pilots about everything in the space. Um, there wasn't a pilot. I was in the union office, phone call came through, was that right? The two guys, um, Ali and Bosser, had been dismissed. Uh, they'd been sacked, and that's what's going to happen. I ran around with a few people and explained what was happening, and nobody says, "Welcome for a pilot here." All said the same thing, "What coming out?" And then the cheerful part, "Oh, right of the miserable day, they're on the top floor, they've got the beer range and get the pies on." And out we went. And one day, on the return of a couple of salesmen, you know, can't go on like this. "But clearly can't go like that, that's what you've caused us to notice." And I says, "If you try it again, you'll get the same result, and try it at different things. The boys have got the gate, and remember this, you have to go to the director of the coal board from the north east area and tell him why you're on strike and why you're not producing any coal." So that's going to be a pretty powerful thing, and those sessions from a day, from you there, the director of the day, he was the most doesn't got anything to deal with. So I don't have too much dispense about all this. I think there'll be many areas where somebody decides to say, "Why don't actually guess people?" And the boys will run the, written notices and advance notices, and pilots come up with a whole array of it. They'll just be out the door. So I don't think it's the end of the world for trade unionism, I think anything but. And I can only say with a hand report, if that's happened anyway, the question was certainly answered, so thanks.
Consul Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. Um, I would like to speak from the perspective of a lifelong trade union member. My colleagues, Consul Walsh and Consul Malcolm, have very eloquently gone over line by line what this bill means, but I want to talk from a very, very personal point of view. Now, sometimes I feel I've been around the trade union movement for so long that I've lost the capacity to be shocked, and I've lost the capacity for anger. Now, every day, in every way, this present government reminds me of that anger. Because new day, new attack on workers, and the trade union bill is just the latest one. Now, trade unionists are like me, they go out and work for their members, and there's people around today in jobs, receiving pensions, enjoying flexible working, enjoying health benefits, that people like me and my colleagues have gone out and worked for as their union officials. So this kind of attack, I take very, very personally. Now, people talk about the spite and the malice from this government. I think it's a lot more sinister than that. They've got a mission, and that mission is to remove the only protection that workers have got. They've said quite clearly they want a Chinese-style economy. Now, China, there's a lovely example. They've got suicide nets up outside the factories to stop workers killing themselves because of the conditions. But that's the sort of thing this government would like. A deregulated workforce with no rights, with no benefits, minimum wage, zero hours contract, glad to get a job. Now, almost a hundred years ago, my grandfather stood outside Tandor Gates, hoping for a day's work for his wife and his kids. He stood outside in the pouring rain, and he didn't get the job, and he went home that night, and what he did get was bronchitis and pneumonia, which killed him at the age of thirty five, leaving a wife and six children. That is what these people want to take us back to, and it cannot, and it must not be allowed. Now, I remember in nineteen eighty four, one of the acts of Margaret Thatcher was to ban trade unions at GCHQ Cheltenham. They were my union members, and many of them actually lost their jobs rather than give up trade union membership. Now, not one single civil servant ever sold his country out to the Russians for a handful of gold. Not one single civil servant ever robbed the public purse by excess expenses claims. And so, you know, they certainly go for the wrong type of people. So the first thing a Blair government did in nineteen ninety seven was restore those trade union rights. So no matter how far and how hard we fight against this bill, it must be our demand that a future Labour government repeals it, gives workers their rights back, and enables members to be represented properly. Thank you.
Barbara.
I'd like to thank Consul Malcolm and the speakers for their very stirring remarks. Certainly is an inspiration to hear people speak from their own experience and from such heartfelt feelings. I agree with everything that's been said. This bill is contrary to the principle of decent jobs and fair pay and goes against the partnership approach that is a feature of industrial relations in much of the public sector, and that's what we're concerned with tonight. Many individuals and organisations have expressed their deep concern over the proposals. Even the government's own watchdog, the Regulatory Policy Committee, deems it not fit of purpose. Two of the proposals are particularly relevant to public sector employers, employers, those relating to facility time and check off. Facility time is time off, as you know, for union reps to support members with individual problems, to work with managers to head off possible disputes, to make workplaces safer, and to promote learning opportunities. All these benefit the employer as well as the employee. Good relationships between employers and workers are built on collectively negotiated agreements that match the needs of the workforce to the needs of the employer. Agreed time off for union duties is an investment in good industrial relations made jointly by the employer and the employee. Check off, the second, uh, aspect of the bill that I'm objecting to in particular, is payroll deductions for union subscriptions. It is easy, efficient, very cheap to administer, and creates a transparent relationship between the employer and the union. Employees can ask for a variety of deductions to be made, for example, charitable giving, pension contributions, and even bank loans. However, it is only union subscriptions which the government is proposing to stop. Its justification is cost, but since the system is already in place and will continue for other deductions, it is unlikely that any savings will be made. Cameron claims that the Tories are the party for working people, but this bill has nothing to do with improving industrial relations. It is rather an ideological attack on the working conditions of ordinary people, as for the motion.
Consul Malcolm, you must, I'd like to debate. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
That concludes this is for today's meeting. Any questions?